Big order, big rise, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a motion to approve last month's minutes?
Everybody read them first.
Oh, I gotta ask if you read them first. Did you read them?
Yes.
Yes.
We all good?
Yeah.
Can we get a motion?
I make a motion except last month's minutes on this special meeting.
There you go.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we, that was approval of the special meeting too?
Yes.
Alright. Okay, new business. We're gonna discuss the salt box. I guess we can't do that unless somebody's here to talk about it, but.
They found out the motor was good, so all we need is gearbox.
Okay.
For now, and they've got, Michael just told me they've got the plugs that they need for up there to switch them out.
No, no, the plugs were on the equipment that they were wanting to use back there.
They were on block.
Yeah, so they need to come up with quotes for the gearbox and the new plug.
They, we had a quote for the gearbox. I forget what it was, it's in the last month's.
No, it was from previous.
Oh, okay.
Previous month.
Alright, yeah, yeah.
Well, since we're in the summertime, I think we can hold that off until next month, until one's there to provide another quote on the gearbox and the new plugs for the back end.
Okay, well then that's the update.
Alright. Alright, we need to discuss the take home policy for the trucks, utility trucks.
They get paid on overtime from the time they are called. Not when they come in and get in the truck, from the time they are called until they clock out to go home.
That's what the personnel policy states, up to thirty minutes, not if it takes them, if they live farther away, it takes them more than thirty minutes than the expenses. But that's why before Shane would send me a text message, hey, I called in so and so at this time, so that way I could write them in and it's their job, it's their responsibility to clock out when they're done, so that way I have their time. So, I, if you guys want to start doing it from the time they're called in, then somebody needs to start texting me to let me know when they're called in. So that way I can write them in at the time that they're called.
Understood. Yeah, 'cause like, what was it, last Saturday?
Two Saturdays ago.
They called and asked me about going to take care of the tree and I just said, go do it.
Yep.
I didn't tell anybody about it.
Yep. But the personnel policy does state as a call in time.
Okay.
Cause, but I think it was when David lived in Greenfield, we couldn't pay him for the time that he got called in, cause of his drive, only, it was just thirty minutes, cause it took him longer than thirty minutes to get here.
Sure, yeah.
Yep.
Now, does this discussion, was it going to include them taking home their trucks?
No, they can stay back there in the shop.
If, yeah.
Because they get paid from the time they're called, they can go up there and get the truck and take it and do whatever, that way the trucks are in a nice warm area twenty-four seven.
Safer area.
Yeah.
And that's what I was gonna say too, cause the reasoning was that they live in town or close to town, well Ron did too, and Ron wouldn't even take the truck home for lunch. If he was going home for lunch, he'd go get his personal vehicle and go home instead of using, having the town's truck. Anyway, associated or any questions asked, that he was doing personal stuff in the town truck.
Yeah, okay.
So that alleviates all that stuff.
David's on his way.
Okay. So, I, I agree with Steve and Michael on that, and Lori.
That's fine.
Do we need to put that in a motion?
No, because it's.
It's already in the policy.
It, there isn't a policy, so if you guys aren't wanting to change it, then we don't need to make one, so there's no vote or motion.
Cause I do believe in the policy, it states that they're supposed to be within thirty minutes be in town on that, that side of it, so.
Yep.
We've had in the past, it's been two hours that someone has re-plug or gotten in here because they decided to go out of town.
Well, and that's another thing that, uh, I don't, it's up to you guys. They get paid automatic two hours if they get called in on the weekends or after work. So, if they're only here fifteen minutes, they're gonna get paid for two hours anyway. So, do you still wanna pay them? For their drive, well, their drive time would be included in that, so.
Yeah.
They're covered no matter what, unless they're here for more than two hours and then I would add the thirty, the drive time to it.
Sure.
Or whenever they clocked out.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So, any more discussion about that? That's it, okay. Moving on, street signs, what did we need to talk about there?
Yeah, we needed to talk about ordering the new street signs because David said, I think the one at front and fountain is bent, that they, once the ground thawed out enough, he might be able to get it straightened out. But there isn't one at all for, I don't, I don't remember who it was.
Chestnut.
Yeah, there isn't one at all for there, and then the other one, I think is back in the garage to be put up, and then I wanted to know where we stand on the sign on that street by the mini mart to alleviate the semis parking on that street. It doesn't have anything to do with state, it's a state, it's a town street. Why can't we put up a sign and alleviate that? I mean, I go by in the morning and you got Pepsi and you got Coke. I mean, if anything happens to any of those people right there, they get back there. No emergency vehicle can get back there.
Yeah, they park a variety of places, sometimes they.
Pepsi always is back there, always.
Yeah.
Coke sometimes will park in front of the mini mart, which is where they should be.
Uh-huh, sure.
I mean, I ran that mini mart for fifteen years and we had semis in there multiple times a week and they parked in front of the mini mart, they never used that street.
So you're talking about putting a sign about like back behind Tony Station, saying no trucks?
That's what I was getting asked, can we make that elbow right there, no trucks?
We can't put it on the mini mart's property.
Right, I, yeah.
But I don't know why we can't put it.
You can't put it on the.
You know, like on the corner, I mean, not each end, I mean inside.
Six, six feet from that street into the mini mart's parking lot is the street right away, so we can put it there whether they want it there or not, they have no say so.
And then we can put one over on the other side at Fountain Pike and, what is that, is that water street?
Water street, yeah.
And then if they get caught doing it, then.
We would have to, would we have to add a no trucks thing to the ordinance or just?
It would have to be semi specific, because I drive down there with a truck and a, and a trailer and Steve drives a truck, you can't put a truck, he has a trailer there.
You know what I meant.
Any, you know, commercial, commercial vehicle.
Can you just put a sign up?
I mean, I don't know if we needed to expand it to trucks and trailers if they block that, cause I don't know how wide, you know, or how much room, but I know definitely semis take up too much room and that street is not made for that weight.
I mean, would that, would we have to include like the trucks with the long trailers? You know what I'm talking about, right, so.
I would, I.
I mean, are they doing any damage?
No.
No, I don't think it's the trucks with the trailers, I think it's mainly the semis, cause it's very difficult. I work for a tree driving school and I see them all day long, it's very hard to make that ninety degree turn.
Oh, yeah.
When you've got a sixty-four foot vehicle.
Yeah.
I don't see how some of them will get around there, I've seen them have to stop and back up and come back forward again.
I thought we voted on this.
We did.
Once before.
We did.
And we, and we all, and it was passed.
And it, you know, and then it got, somebody brought up, well, we had to check with the state. I don't understand what the state's got to do with it.
But he's going to, he made a note, he's gonna ask Mara if we need to actually put it in an ordinance.
Okay.
And then, so they'll let me know, and if it has to be in a, in an ordinance, then we'll get that ma, change made and vote on it next month and get the sign ordered.
Okay, so we voted on the sign already?
No, not on the sign, this, this has just been an ongoing conversation.
I thought we did, I thought we voted.
I don't remember actual decision being made, I just remember sent, it, it being said that we'll find out what we can do, and then I never heard.
So are we gonna have to wait and order the street signs until next month?
Well, he needs to make a list, which I thought I told him that. He needs to make a list of all the street signs in the whole town.
Hartley and Chestnut.
Any that's like faded or not reflective like they're supposed to be. He needs to make a whole list and that, so that way we can order them all at the same time and not get charged more shipping by doing separate orders.
Now, with that, do we need to order the signs for the fire department and the parking?
Yes.
No parking?
That, he would, could add that to his list of signs that need to be ordered, yes.
Okay, and we know where all those are supposed to go?
He should.
He's supposed to find that out.
Okay.
I knew there was more street signs than just Hartley and Chestnut, there's a couple on Davis Street.
I think we, I think he was instructed to find out, last meeting to find all of them and none of them except for one's been done.
Okay.
Alright, we'll leave it like that when he gets in here, but he's gotta give us a full list of signs for next month so we can order them all.
Sounds good, we'll do that.
Moving on.
Alright, yeah, move it on, certification tests for Walker?
He passed his water test, which is the second. He has to have three, so he's got two, and the way that we've been doing it in the past couple of years is they get a two dollar raise for getting their certificate. So I went ahead and prepared and amended salary ordinance if you guys decide to move forward with that, with his two dollar raise, two dollar raise change on it.
Wasn't his wife supposed to pass the test too, walking back?
I'll make a motion for the salary ordinance change for Walker.
And the one other question I wanna ask it is, do you wanna make it effective um, for the pay period that we're in, which was March twenty-eighth? Because if not, he'll have to wait.
No.
He'll have to, yeah, make it March twenty-eighth, right?
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past, isn't it?
Yes, yes. Okay, so now you can operate your motion.
Okay, so we got a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Anybody opposed?
We've got one more test.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I had sent out as far as on that side of it, so there's two parts to that test. There's so many hours, they have to be accumulated, but he's already tried to take the test once, so even though he passes, if he passes that test, he still has to get his hours before he actually becomes a certified operator. So even though he passed the next one, it does, then you still have to have your time and I don't know what that is. Hey, what is the total time that's needed before you can become a water operator?
Uh, what do you mean?
How many hours? Do you know that? Cause on the very last test of Walker is, will be.
First WT three?
Yes.
Is he gonna be here two years, two years?
Two years before, so.
And that'd be August.
So he can, he can take his test, if he passes it, he'd be like a, almost like an apprentice, or I forget however they were then.
Wouldn't be official until he hit that two year.
But when he hits his two years, then he can technically take over everything.
Right.
Uh, just on his water.
That's, that's, that's his last one, he already had one.
He's already got, yeah, he's got his wastewater and distribution, so he's just trying to get his WT three now.
Okay, so he's got the sewer license?
Yeah, that's the one he got first. Okay.
Any more discussion with that? Alright.
Do we wanna backtrack to the street signs?
Yes. And the question was, did we, do you, in regard to the signs, uh, did you find out how many signs we needed for the fire department, no parking signs?
And any other street signs?
The only, the only street signs we're missing is fountain, not fountain, um.
Hartley and Chestnut.
Or it is fountain and chestnut.
Fountain and chestnut.
We've got Hartley, so I think it's fountain.
Yeah, it's one of the two, I got it written down.
But did you go through the whole town and find what, any that are faded, not reflective anymore, missing, damaged, that need replaced?
Me and Kyle replaced a couple of them last year.
But that's not what I'm, I, you need to make a list of all the street signs that need replaced and order them all at the same time, instead of doing a bunch of separate orders. I thought that, that, you understood that's what I meant last time, but that's what you need to do and then we'll, they'll can, they can pass to order them all and then everything's taken care of.
Okay, so if there's, if there's not any more that's needed, can I go ahead and order the two that I do need?
What's the two?
The, I think it's fountain, it's fountain and chestnut.
There's, there's more than that missing.
Cause there's, didn't you say there's some on Davis?
Davis Street and then Block South on twenty-seven, there's those, quite a few.
Does the ADA guideline, they have to be visible, so if they're faded and not reflective, no more, they have to be replaced.
Okay, I'll go back through my own check.
So we'll just table this for now and then, of course, by that time, you'll, you'll have a response about this. Yeah, so then we can.
Order that sign too?
Yep, do them all at once.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Okay. Uh, is there anything that needs to be discussed in regard to the department reports?
As far as on the department reports, as far as the police department goes, still waiting on getting that camera installed from the one that we've already approved. They've been working on other cruisers on getting a camera put in, so I think it's next in line as far as they get done, and then the only other thing is that, um, when the back tires needed to be aligned, you know, the misalignment in the back, he was able to get that taken care of, but the tires that were back there did get ate up again, so he is taking it to Greensport and getting two new tires on it. One of two things, it's coming out of the donations or it's coming out of the equipment on that side of it, they just wanted to update, update you on that. Other than that, all the certifications have been passed, everything's been switched over, all of that, so.
Okay.
Nice and smooth.
And so is Terrell official, official now?
Yes, I swarmed both ends last Friday.
Okay.
With their new titles.
Alright. Mower services. I know that the mower service, from what I've heard, we were talking about getting one, not repaired, but just get it, get it tuned, whatever, just get the service. Like, the price of all of that went up.
Just cause it's technically in season now?
Yeah, when it was off season, it was cheaper.
Sure.
Any comment on the chainsaw?
Don't we have a red Dahmer with a twenty-four inch bar on it?
Unless that's our, we got, so we have a Still, it's the smaller one, it works great. I mean, I took it apart and cleaned it all again this year. Last year we had trouble with the long bar one, it's a off-brand one, that, that might be the one you're talking about. Kyle tried getting it running, I think we had it running like one time last year. It went out again, um, I know the tree that fell down in the park. It'd been a lot nicer to have a longer bar chainsaw, cause that small one took a little longer cutting that big tree up, but I figure we get a quote, um, let you guys see, I think it would be helpful if we did get one, as if, if we gotta come back and cut the rest of that tree down, I don't know about the little ones.
I've got them, so I'll cut it down, that's not a problem on that side of it. I would say, um, keep the equipment serviced, if it's not working, get it serviced and get that Dahmer running again, cause those, those are good souls.
Well, we, so we looked in the, we asked our guy Still, our John Deere, he said with that older one, um, by the time you put parts and labor into it, he goes it, it might almost be cheaper just to get a new one, so. Cause they, it's a hefty hourly rate.
Yeah, if anything, drop it off at the house and all over the parts and fix it.
I mean, that works.
Cause I mean, you can, I've got that twenty-four inch bar, twenty-eight inch bar, all of that, and I never spent that much.
Yeah, we're just kinda, yeah, we did. We're just kinda hopping around here on this department needs.
Well, the street signs, you know, we're doing in May.
And just right here, they wanna take, the way that our purchasing policy is written, they can't, can't do that. If it's a big job, they have to get quotes.
Oh, okay, well that makes sense.
Sure, all vehicle work to be done in Speedy Pete's as possible, but.
Which most of the time he is the lowest, but still the way our ordinances and our policies are written, you can't, can't do that.
Yeah, that's true.
So we need more estimates for the work to be done on?
Um, he, Walker did try to reach now, I think it was either two or three other places. I believe one other place said they were gonna get a quote, one place, he never got a call back. So, I mean, he did try getting a third quote for the water truck. But I know I was just sitting the other day and experienced one of his death wobbles and it, like, it literally felt like you're driving an earthquake.
Is it a Ford?
Huh?
Is it a Ford?
It is. My Ford don't do that.
So wasn't the front suspension? What, wasn't the front suspension just replaced on that thing?
Uh, something with the pitman arm, um.
It's one of those things that in vehicles, when something's not right and you fix what you think it is and it's still not right and. So I think that's what it was, is they fixed that, but also told him that that needed to be done eventually, or it was still gonna shake.
Right.
I think that was the.
Well, he's doing like forty mile an hour, that thing felt like the tires were coming off.
And as long as, the quote thing, as long as they attempt to get more than one quote, that satisfies.
Yeah, looks like they got two of them.
Their requirement, so if they make that attempt, they can, you can go ahead and vote on what you have there.
Yeah, I'll make a motion in Speedy Pete's, cause they've got two quotes, one of them is for a thousand thirty-seven twenty-three and that was from A and B Auto, the other one was for Speedy Pete for uh, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents.
Okay, so we got a motion, do we have a second? Did we all get a?
The, all the quotes should be in order.
There you go, Lori.
With the department needs sheet too, so.
I got that one, but that's the only one I got.
There's, there's two.
They're stapled together.
Oh, okay.
So we have a motion, do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. So we're getting this done. We talked about gravel for the shop before.
Yeah, we talked about that last month when I did the meetings.
Okay.
They were supposed to get quotes on how much it would cost.
Alright. No quotes?
There's three quotes in there.
Is there?
Yeah, so you need to look at those quotes and vote on that.
One of these quotes what?
The gravel that they need for all areas.
They're wanting to make it better on that side of it.
Yeah, shop's rough, lagoon's about, I mean, there's like next to none really out there, so it's, you drive around mud all the time.
Except for fishing right there.
Yeah.
Boy, that's a lot of people, isn't it?
And what is all of this gonna come out of?
It will get split, I'll have to, they'll have to guesstimate how much they use in the areas they use it, so that way I can split it between buckle road and streets and water and, and sewer, depending on where it is. Like the garage back there, what, how much they use back there, it would get split into threes.
Right.
What they use it, the lagoon would be sewer, so on and so forth.
Most of it will be sewer for the lagoons and.
All of that is.
Well, not besides the shop.
That's bigger than that.
That's what we decided?
We need more gravel, lagoons, all the back there shop.
Are you rebuilding the driveways?
I'm not used to them stapling it together.
Are you rebuilding the driveways that's already there?
At the shop?
No.
Oh, there is.
If the shop is just, we're just gonna put, try to pack some mates down in, I mean, it's gotta go base out there, but the lagoons, it's, it's gonna take a hefty amount of seventy threes that we're getting, that we'd like to get.
Looks like we got three quotes here, one of them is for Webb Land for eight thousand five dollars. Uh, you got B and B Construction for six thousand six hundred and ten dollars. And you got Woodruff Lawn and Service, that'd be eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Lowest one's gonna be B and B.
I make a motion that we have B and B for the gravel, for the shop, lip stations and the lagoons.
I said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
That was B and B, you said?
Yeah.
No, I'm just looking. Vowbacks?
Yeah, what's the deal with the valve?
Um, I mean, Walker's been asking for this for a while.
The valve exerciser, by the way, there it is.
Um, yeah, you might as well quit asking.
What?
I'd say you might as well quit asking.
For what?
Do you want me?
No, go ahead.
Do you want me to explain it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Valve exerciser is for the new valves, cause it's where they don't have to manually open and close them on that side of it, um, it makes the job easy on that, that side of it, easier, um, I didn't see that one, let's see, here in a second. Um, I didn't see that one, let's see, here in a second.
I don't know.
You got it?
Big water.
The thing is, though, on that side of it, um, you got it? Yeah, there's no quotes.
Yeah. Yeah, there's none there.
No, it just wrote down, it's not from. The actual companies.
Isn't there three different quotes there then?
So anyways, there's one from Hydraulic Buddy Portable Cordless Hydrant Gate Valve Exerciser. I don't know who it's from, US Blue Book. It's roughly five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars, there's another portable one, it's a Honda. For eight thousand seven hundred and five dollars and ninety-nine cents. And here's another one, something about US Blue Book, it's for six thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. As far as the valve exerciser go with the, the media that we're gonna have to be doing, um. The gravel we're spending.
And the well that we have.
And the well that's being looked at, all the money, um. If they would do one a day, they could get it done during the spring and fall, as far as on that side of it. And I don't think, at this point, with the amount of money that's going out, and as low as the counts are. No money needs to be spent, they just need to spend one a day, or if both of them wanna do it, then they could get to a day and get, get them done quicker. Because they should have already been done last year, and only tipped twenty-two of them got done.
So in other words, this is something we need table for now.
Not really table.
No.
Or, you can, they could bring it up maybe next year, but.
Bring it back up. As of this year, was something we need?
Didn't we talk about that before?
Yeah, we've talked about it several times, and, and.
Isn't it until next year?
But, and it's been said that, we never had to have one before, it was always done manually, when Ron was here, so.
Alright.
The question is, why can't it still be done manually, instead of spending money we don't need to spend?
But did we decide about the change?
Oh, Mike's gonna work on it.
We only talked about the mower.
Yeah, we talked about the mower. Uh, insulation heaters for the east side of the shop and barn.
The mowers.
Yeah, we need to go back to the mowers.
Do we need to go back to mowers, okay.
Because you didn't actually vote on anything, or decide whether you wanna let them do it, or make them do it.
Alright, discussion on the mowers.
Uh, that's, I think, I, I feel that's why we're paying the town boys, and that's something they need to do.
And I agree with that, that's what they've been doing, and I think they need to continue to do it.
If there's an issue with them, then they go back to the dealer, but. They need to check engine oil and transmission oil every time they jump on the seat.
And then change the oils when they need to be, and put the new spark plugs, and check the coolant, and all that stuff.
They're both air, or water cooled, air cooled or water cooled?
Water.
I'm pretty sure water cooled.
Okay, now heaters.
Now heaters. Insulation heaters for the east side of the shop and barn, discussion on that?
Um, so there's a couple different. Options, I guess we won't put it, um. Walker found, uh, the heaters, they're pretty similar to the ones we have. In the insulated side of our shop up there. Um, we're gonna look just to get one of them for the barn down here, and then put one on the east side of shop. Um, and then. I, I think it'd be smartest and cheapest just to go with the, the foam board insulation. And then we can, I mean, Walker can insulate everything that's not insulated back here. You run a heater, and everything's temperature controlled throughout the winter.
So last month, Moth brought up, as far as that all the equipment has plug-ins, that you can actually plug in, that they're called block heaters. You found the block heaters, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's no reason to spend even more money to heat that garage, when you're gonna have to raise the electric bill of the equipment. All the time that they're gonna be spending on it. Then all, all they have to do is, when they get there in the morning, is plug them in, within thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, everything's heated up, ready to go.
I would like to see it. See some heating back there eventually, I don't know if right now is the best time to do that. Um, I don't see any harm in insulating though. Any comment on that?
Uh, insulating's always good.
The, what's the R-value of that stuff, just foam insulation, putting that up doesn't have a whole lot of R-value?
A whole lot of what?
R-value.
I don't know what that means.
Yeah, it doesn't mention it on this.
On three.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not gonna mean anything.
That's only, that's only three-quarter inch.
Yeah, that's not really gonna take of anything.
It'll take two inch.
Or better.
Better, yeah.
Well, if we did it, then what would you recommend?
Leaving it the way it is.
Is there any insulation on it now?
Nope, not where they're talking about, no.
The heated part is insulated, but not the other part, where they were, where they were wanting to put heaters, isn't insulated. I think, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so our, the white building in the back, it's got the four bay doors, the two bay doors on the left, it's all insulated, there's heaters in there. Two bays on the right, it's literally, you just see the metal and the frame.
What do we keep over there?
Uh, right now, we got our backhoe, skid steer, um, I've been keeping the sweeper in there, um. And then, it's just been. That's really the big things that's in there.
What big area is it?
Um, I mean, it's.
About the size of this room?
Yeah, probably pretty close, a little bit longer that way, but.
It's quite a big area.
Yeah.
It's probably double this room.
Well, I know when I had my garage insulated, it didn't help at all.
Yeah.
You gotta shut the door.
And it's insulated top to bottom, on the floor.
Yeah. It's hard to.
Alright, are we done with this discussion?
Did you get estimates on insulation, or are they in here?
Yeah.
Yes, the, that's paid up.
There's a couple.
That's what it would cost to insulate it.
Wow, well, that's like per piece. On one of those.
This is for those, those, you know, thick sheets, is what that is.
Some board.
That's a top line, what's, oh, that's five hundred and eighteen.
Yeah.
Use those, but. They are suggesting that we need, we should use, uh, heavier, or, or different, more effective, uh, insulation, besides what's showing there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I was saying that I don't mind us insulating it back there some, at some point, I just don't know if now is the time.
Yeah.
Right.
Spending the money right now is a good thing. So anything else, man? No? Okay, free course for wastewater, after ten, uh, ten-eight hours, it's free, I don't think, I don't see a problem with that, anybody else? How do you feel about it?
So that's, that's a, uh, it's a, I didn't, um, got my letter back, they denied my challenges. So I have to take at least an eight-hour wastewater course, um, and then I just got this email, um. I think it was yesterday, um. On the thirteenth and fourteenth, from nine-thirty to two-thirty. Uh, it's a, it's, it's just strictly wastewater class for people that failed to test three times.
It looks like you need to register as soon as possible.
Is it online, or?
It's in Indy.
So you gotta go to Indy those two days? So there's no cost for the class, and just be, like a day at work?
Yep. She just told me, the sooner I can tell her, the better.
Right.
Said, because those ones do tend to fill up pretty quick.
Yeah, I bet they do.
Do we need to get a motion on that? Yes, uh, so can we get a motion?
So it says thirteenth and fourteenth, so is it two days, or just one day?
Two days.
It's an eight-hour class, so.
Mm-hmm, we're splitting it up in two days.
That's why he said nine, what'd you say, nine-thirty to what?
Nine-thirty to two-thirty.
Yeah.
Each day.
He'd be able to come in and do whatever he needed to do before he headed to Indy and be back before four o'clock.
I'll make a motion for David to go to Indy on May thirteenth and fourteenth to do his wastewater exam.
Second.
All in favor?
Review. Class review.
Yeah, I don't really know what they call it.
One of those.
Alright, moving on. We, uh, salt box, salt removal, Mr. Sawyer.
Um, so, was looking into ways on how to dispose of the old salt. So when we get the new salt, I'm not messing with that real nasty clumpy stuff. James Sawyer said he would take it.
Okay.
Um, I was just told to ask you guys if we need to charge him for anything, or if not, I'm literally just loading it up in the trash can and getting rid of it. So.
Yeah, we'd just throw it away if he, so if James is willing to come get it and take it, then.
I'd say let James come and get it if he wants it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as on that side of it.
The. Problem would be the EPA. On that, either way you go, I mean, you can't just throw it in the trash.
No, you can't.
Oh, no.
Well, James is gonna use it for his, he's probably gonna smash it up and reuse it.
Yeah.
For his.
Business.
Business, like what it is that we do, as far as salt in the streets, he does sidewalks, and, or not sidewalks, well, he does sidewalk, streets, driveways, all that stuff.
I think, I think that salt there was our biggest problem with the salt box this year, because several times it jammed the auger, I don't know if that's what. Potentially tore transmission up, but. Um, I don't know if you guys talked about, got the motor tested, who's your battery tested it, motor was good. So, I mean, obviously, we, it hurt.
I would say probably the first thing, the auger was still good too, on that side of it, so. The first thing is that you need to get new plugs put on it, get it put back together, and get new plugs put on it, and then evaluate as far as what the condition of the auger's in.
Yeah, well, the transmission's bad.
So.
So we still have to get that part, but.
But the motor wasn't working because of the plug, because the plug wasn't giving it.
It was on, it was turning on, but it wouldn't turn the auger, like, you can hear, I could hit the vibrator button, it would start up and everything, but.
You know, we have a way of testing that.
I think Kyle, I asked Kyle about it, he said they just replaced. Kyle said they just replaced the transmission, about two, three years ago, maybe.
Unless I'm aware of.
Yeah, they've done something, but I don't remember what it was.
I'd like to see the plug changed out first.
I mean, I can, I can do that, you just want me to go ahead and order new plugs?
What do you guys think, because I mean, that, if, if that plug isn't giving enough power to everything, just like the motor wasn't running, because that plug isn't giving, it may be sending current through it. But if it's not sending the correct amps, that motor isn't gonna run, that could be possibly affecting the auger, maybe not.
I mean, that's an easy.
That's a, that's a cheapest start.
Yeah. I recommend we do that, at least, start.
So we give the old salt to?
Yeah.
Okay, I never did hear anybody say that.
Yeah, if he wants to do it, he can come get it.
Yeah, if he wants it, he can come get it.
Okay, so we've discussed the salt box issues, right? Um, now. Do you want to discuss, uh, the. The individual in the community who wants to come and do the carvings in the park, do we really need to discuss that?
Uh.
Well, I'd like to know what kind of carvings they're talking about, and are they taking some trees and do it?
No.
It's the, it's the tree trunks that are left.
Okay.
From the trees that fell.
They, well, you talked about, so the, the tree to your left, right when you're pulling in the park, it's got the, the little support wire growing through it. You talked about doing something like a, kind of tribute to school possibly, it's like, maybe like a night, something along that, along them lines. The one in the back that fell, uh, me and Walker took care of, he wants to kind of do some sort of like infantry kind of tribute. Uh, because I guess there's several people in the cemetery that was.
Service.
Yeah, private service, stuff like that, so, it was along them lines. But I, I mean, I kind of set up a thing with, the guy that does the carving, and the guy that wants to kind of take care of the cost. And so they're talking, I told them, kind of keep me in the loop, but I told them that I would bring it up to you guys to see. I mean, I don't, I don't know what steps they even, it's just a matter of you guys saying, okay, yeah, they can do it. If they can, if not, we're just gonna cut the trees down, so.
I'm fine with letting them try and carve it, at their expense, sit down.
So do you want to actually put that in a, a motion? Okay.
Do you want to pick me up and get to a vote?
So Michael motioned, and Ramon didn't second?
All in favor? We did do that?
Aye.
Yeah.
Okay. Walker, the schedule review for the WT test, do we need to discuss that?
He's gonna be driving to Indy like the last time when David did it.
Okay. I don't know why that needs to be discussed.
I think you gotta give him permission to do it, because last time David did it, we paid him for twelve hours, well, he comped it, but, and it didn't change anything.
Okay.
And this isn't gonna change anything, because he was way down there, I, I would imagine it's probably just a review to see what it is that he missed.
Mm-hmm.
On that.
I, I mean, it, it's helped me tremendously each time I went down and reviewed. Because like I said, you don't know exactly what you answered right, answered wrong, until you actually see your whole test.
So that is, like you guys voted for him to go last time, that would be whether you want to vote to let him go to Indy for a day.
Alright, can we get a motion? On that? For Walker to go do his review?
Make a motion for Walker to do his review.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Any opposed?
No. Um, what's this about the short-term flex of hours?
So, this is, this is with me, so my wife has accepted a new job. Um, and she starts the fourteenth, um. The person she talked to, she said it could be anywhere from a week to five weeks of training, but while she's in this training. I just, I just need to make sure I leave enough time to pick up my kids from school, so they get out of school at two-forty. So I think it's, it's only gonna be five weeks max. One person she talked to said it could be two or three days, and the person she has talked to yesterday said it could be all five. So until she actually starts, I, I don't know, I just wanted to throw it out. So until she actually starts, I, I don't know, I just wanted to throw it out there, like, I would rather not do that, but.
You gotta do what you gotta do.
I mean, she's taken a significant pay raise taking this job, so.
Yeah, and when we hired Sean, we let him, I forget what the reason was, but he wanted to work seven to three, or. Seven to three thirty instead of seven thirty to four, and you, and council allowed it. So that's basically what David's asking is to work his eight hours, but for that time period to come in at six and leave at two thirty.
I mean, the, the days like ten, work my regular shift, I'm gonna work my regular shift, but it's just.
I'm fine with that, as long as it is that short term on that side of it, cause our operating hours are four thirty to, or sorry, seven thirty to four on that time.
Yeah.
So if it is short term.
So you're making a motion, Michael?
I'll make a motion allowing short term.
Very good, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it goes. Alright, um, also, I, I wanted to ask, I didn't wanna ask. Uh, did you say something about the rate study?
Yep, my, uh, I talked to Mike Klein Peter to ask him about, um, grants, the timeframe, and. When I called him, found out that two years ago, he started a financial advisory section or part to his business. So he can do the rate study, and someone will be here next month for that rate study at the next month meeting. And next year, the first round next year, we can apply for utility grants without any point deductions. So that's taken care of.
Okay.
At the first of next year?
The first round next year.
Yes.
Alright, and then as far as our triad meeting.
I gotta get Wes Morrow to set up that Zoom meeting that we talked about now that I finally got moved.
Okay. And there's some discussion about, I'm sorry, does somebody wanna?
No, I said vinyl.
Okay.
Yeah.
Somebody, uh, do, there's some discussion about whether we need to update the purchasing policies, cause right now.
But this, this needs to be put on the agenda if you guys wanna discuss changing that, not just brought up randomly.
It's two hundred. Oh, okay, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for next month then.
Okay.
Um, alright, what else we got going? Anything else on the reports we wanna discuss?
Uh, as far as last month, it was talked about the drain or the gutters all around the building, was that able to get.
Check the gutters, they're, I mean, they're, they're clean, they got gutters, gutter guards all the way around, I ended up, was able to walk on the roof.
Right.
Pretty safely, so.
Was you able to check all the downspouts to make sure they were cleared out and not plugged up, and that's why it was causing all the ice overflow?
Nope, I'll look at that tomorrow.
Yeah, then the other thing was, uh, it was talked about down there at South End Front, or Vine, South and Vine, as far as that manhole was gonna get fixed. Has it gotten fixed yet?
Mm-mm, nope, I mean, we're just, we're hoping to get a couple days and.
It's been nice all past month, there's been a lot of.
It's been like thirty-five, forty degrees this last month. Maybe a couple days here and there, but it's been.
Yeah, there's been a lot of days that.
More cold than it has warm.
Lot of nice weather, and, um, you can drive around all these other towns, you see all the repairs being done at this time, so.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be completed by next month or.
That's, yep, that's what we're, we're shooting for.
Well, we talked about it last month, that it being completed also, and it's still not fixed. The other thing was, did you ever get a quote on the roller, or a roller for the park?
Mm-mm, I think, I mean, the only, the only one I know that has one around is Cody Woodruff.
No, I'm talking about buying one, a quote is what we.
Oh, actually buying one?
Yes. That's what we talked about last month.
Nope, I can get some quotes together for that.
It'd be expensive.
No, you can buy them for three, four hundred dollars, just the water filled.
Well, see how.
No, I don't, I don't.
I'll find them out.
Oh.
I don't think that would be enough to do anything.
No, I can't.
My, my two hundred, my two hundred pound one does a nice job.
So we tried, we used Kyle's last year, and it, I mean, the moles are right back within a week, so.
We have to do it weekly, it's, it's a on, ongoing thing to press them out. So. Alright, that's all, I don't wanna update on.
Okay. Uh, as far as department reports, Terrell, is there anything you wanted to say?
Uh, nope.
Okay. Uh, at this point, we could probably approve claims and payments, can we get a motion?
I make a motion to pay all claims.
Second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there you go.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we get a second on that?
Second?
Did you wanna say anything?
No.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a gavel.